The regular November city council meeting to order with my trusty Dusty Reiner's clinic gavel. Looks like we're gonna be in for a wild and woolly weather tonight. See it's starting to rain out there. So, we got a lot of things to discuss here tonight. Think what I'd like to do is start with the autumn audience participation and public comment before we do the consent agenda. So this is, if you have some public comment, please identify yourself and where you're from. This is a time for the public to address the console for up to three minutes on non-agenda topics. And this is not a time for debate or to ask questions. And your comments do not necessarily require an answer from the council. So do we have any hands raised tonight?
We do. We have a Zoom user. It's first.
Should I go ahead?
Yes, can you identify yourself, please?
Yes, yes, this is Linda Ballard and I live at the intersection of First and Idaho. And we're having a problem in our neighborhood and that has to do with what I call freelance tourist camping. And I noticed a couple of years ago, and I didn't say anything, and somebody said, oh, you're supposed to report that. So this last summer, I noticed a couple incidences of people camping, sleeping overnight on Idaho. And so I contacted law enforcement, I reported it, and they showed up. And then shortly after that, I encountered law enforcement directly. And I just said, you know, I'm the one that's finding these campers in the resident, in my residential neighborhood. And I felt from law enforcement that this is a pervasive problem. And he said that it's happening on all the residential streets and including Lenita. And so I am very concerned about this happening. And I'm wondering what kinds of things can be done about it to redirect these freelance campers, squatter campers, I don't know what the name of them, but I can tell you this. Three weeks ago, there was a camper who settled in for five days on Idaho, camping in their camper truck. So I, I don't know if signage is something that would be helpful. Law enforcement told me that it's just too pervasive for them to be able to keep up on. I find it concerning that possibly us residents would have to police this behavior. And I'm very concerned about it escalating and possibly to the point where we see tents in the right of ways in our residential neighborhoods. I mean, who knows what could happen with this? So I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention so that we can start thinking about how to problem solve this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. I might get comment on that. We are aware of that problem. It's a growing problem all down the coast. You can, if you get up early in the morning and drive north or south on 101, you'll find people camping all along, all the viewpoints.
Yes.
We do have signage along the beach, no camping, but now they're moving up into the neighborhoods. The city, the city has a $500 fine. We have been writing tickets. We have been taking people to court. And we will review this again with the chief and the police department. But it's, it's, it's a challenge.
Yeah.
That's, there's more and more, we're definitely aware of it.
Okay.
I, particularly if you've got somebody that's hanging out in your street for more than one night, make sure you call.
Oh, yeah.
Never call the police and get them up there. I know that Officer Mike Sims normally has the morning watch and that's the first thing he does the first hour.
Yes.
Wow, he goes out and writes those tickets. So, uh, yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Somehow the message isn't getting through to the public though. And
Well, it's, yes, I know.
Yeah.
I, I'm sure if you've noticed what's been going on up in Portland and other places, this is pervasive everywhere.
Yeah, that's what I'm afraid of. I would really hate to see that happen in Manzanita.
I understand. We'll do the best we can.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You bet. Looks like we have somebody else.
Next, we have Donna Miller.
Yes, Donna.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Thank you. According to the last census, the median age in Manzanita is 64.8 years old. Retirees are attracted to our wonderful community. It's safe, clean, artistic, welcoming, surrounded by a plethora of outdoor activity opportunities. However, the quantum growth of tourism here, the rapid allocation of building permits, and the trend towards building bigger to house more people is chipping away at our infrastructure. Our community's supports and resources are overburdened and undermanned. Here is a good example of just this. In July, I delivered a meal to a Manzanita senior citizen. I found her in bed, unable to get up, saying something was very wrong. I immediately called 911. They arrived within seven minutes, triaged the patient, then told me they were calling for an ambulance to transport her to Seaside Hospital. A few minutes after they had called, they said that it would be at least 30 minutes before an ambulance would arrive here. They were all out on other calls because of the high demands. I was then asked if I would be willing to drive her myself to Seaside Hospital. It would be better than waiting for an ambulance. I said yes, a bit concerned about the, what would happen on the way there. They loaded her into my truck and we went to the hospital. Six hours later, I headed home after being told she had had a heart attack and would now be admitted. She spent two weeks in the hospital, went to rehab, and is now in a full-time care facility. She never made it back home. More and more tourists, vacationers, day trippers, or week stayers are taxing the resources that we need to live here. It's time to slow down the growth, not to encourage more. And with that said, I did watch the workshop today. And I really want to thank Leila and Nan for opening the conversation about destination management instead of tourism promotion. This gives hope to all of us for the livability for our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. If you're at the workshop today, you did see we talked about the ambulance situation a little bit too. We may hear a little bit more about that here in a minute from Chief Besswick. Do we have anybody else from, must make a comment at this point?
I have no other hands raised.
Okay. Well, let's move forward. We got a big agenda here tonight. The next item is the consent agenda, which tonight is the approval of the, excuse me, over six minutes, the bills for payment. And also you will see on the consent agenda tonight is the reappointment of John Nansen to the planning commission. And as you probably know, appointments to the commissioner made by the mayor. John is an experienced and effective member of the planning commission and has agreed to serve another term. Let me, I just want to talk a little bit about the process. When positions open up because of resignations or end of term, the city openly advertises the openings to attract candidates for us to review. We have done that in the past and we will do that, continue to do that in the future. But at this time, it says John is, is experienced and an effective member of the council and has agreed to serve another term in this time of extreme activity in this area, I thought it was appropriate to reappoint John in this position. Do we have any comments from the council or someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I, I called John and talked to him about the planning commission. I don't have any objection to his reappointment. I think I understand the process and your authority to make the appointments, but honestly, don't think it's a good practice to have appointments part of a consent agenda. I, I think particularly at this point in time, the community seems to be particularly interested in issues pertaining to the planning commission, development, growth. Even if counsel is uniformly supportive of John, and I certainly am at this point, having talked with him, it just feels like a separate and distinct issue from the approval of old minutes and routine invoices that we, we generally approve on a consent agenda. So I would appreciate if we could, even if it's just for a form over substance tonight, if we could just take John's nomination out of the consent agenda and immediately consider it after the consent agenda, I think that would be at least a recognition of the fact that there, there has been some concern in the community about the role of the planning commission, what it does, what it should do, what it can do, what the, how reactive it is, how proactive it is. And I think that probably spurred some of the interest in this particular reappointment. It, I haven't heard any criticisms of John himself, and I agree with you that it's a good idea to retain experienced members, particularly at this time, but it, I just would prefer if we could take it out of the consent agenda and
Okay, let's do that. Let's, let's have a motion on the content agenda on the approval of the minutes of October 6th and approval of bills and we'll discuss the appointment after we approve the consent agenda.
I usually make that motion, but I can't find a copy of the bills for payment. I've gone through the packet a few times and I don't see them in there. So I like to review the bills for payment before I make the motion to accept the agenda.
Okay. Well, someone else made a motion to accept the agenda then.
I had the same difficulty Hans did this month.
That would be my bad. I'm so sorry. I will email that over to you guys. I must have missed, missed out on my final, final packet.
Thanks, Nita. It, it happens from time to time. So apologies, if you do notice that in the future, let us know. I mean, you're all pretty good about that. The mayor and I both reviewed those already, just so folks know.
So can I have a motion a second to accept the consent agenda or do we move it to the end of the meeting? So you can review your email on the bills.
I'm willing, I'm willing to accept it. I just didn't, I don't like to make a motion unless I know what I'm motioning.
Can we take the bills out of the consent agenda? And approve them next month, both the October, November bills? Would that work?
I don't know. I don't know if that works in practice or not.
Yeah, I think ideally if we could do it tonight, so perhaps we do move it to the end.
Yeah, that's it. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna move the whole consent agenda to the end, okay?
Why don't we go ahead and deal with the planning commission?
Yeah, that's what we're gonna do next. Okay, so I would like a motion to reappoint John Nansen to the planning commission. So in any other discussion you guys want to have on that, now's the time.
Well, I think, I think the point that Jerry was making and part of what we talked about in the workshop this afternoon is that there, there's a, there's a good process and the mayor, according to the charter, is the one that makes the selection. I think the process itself needs to be as transparent as possible. And when you have a a position that is as difficult and challenging as the planning commission, having people that return to the planning commission is really an advantage. But I, we agreed this afternoon, or we confirmed this afternoon, that any openings will be publicized and make, make, making sure that the public is aware of openings. I think we're doing that. We maybe just need to do a little bit of job of getting that information out. Transparency is critical and we, we totally support that.
I guess I'll weigh in only to say, and we talked about, as Linda mentioned, we talked about this at the, at the work session. I take a little bit different view of it in this respect is, and I even told a little story during the workshop where I won't bore anybody with the story again, but you know, the truth of the matter is, I believe that we should have an open recruitment process regardless of whether an incumbent is applying or not applying. And that even the incumbents need to reapply should they wish to pursue another term on any commission committee or any service to the, to the community. It allows everyone to have the opportunity to participate. And I think if it's clear to those that are applying for it, that there's an incumbent that likely will move forward, that's fine. But it should be open. It should be open to everyone. And I would encourage us going forward. It probably is not gonna happen, certainly not gonna happen tonight. And this is not about John. I made, made that comment as well. This is about transparency, the process and the process itself. We, in my mind, we have a process that essentially is, as the charter suggests, the mayor makes an appointment, which is purely within the charter authority of the mayor to do. But it might be a little old fashioned. And you know, we talked about the fact that, and there wasn't too long ago where people had to have their arms twisted to participate. And now we have a situation where people want to be involved, want to participate, want to be acknowledged as willing. And I think we need to honor that. So I, I don't know how we get there from here. But I think going forward, I would really like to see us establish a more firm, more evolved process to select those in the community that wish to serve. So I guess I agree with everything that Linda is saying. I just would add a little more that it just because you're an incumbent doesn't necessarily mean that you're just free to go on forever and ever and ever. That requires a, a review as well. So. But I, and Mike, I want you, the mayor, I'd like you to know that I appreciate everything that you do. So this is also not any kind of an indictment on the process thus far. I just think that we've evolved to a different place than where we were even a few years ago. And it's time we kind of stepped up and said, hey, look, there's, there's gotta be a consistent way to apply for these positions.
Any other comments on this?
Well, I just have one, one more comment, I guess, and that is that I think part of the intrigue about the planning commission and this appointment comes down to a relative amount of confusion about what the planning commission's role is and how proactive the planning commission should be. I mean, the, the name, planning commission certainly suggests a proactive role. And I think that some in the community are questioning the commission's, the limits of the commission's authority, or how it exercises its authority. And specifically with regard to the comprehensive plan and what its role might be in any revision of the comprehensive plan or how tied the planning commission is to the comprehensive plan. So all of that for me says that, just as we're having an update tonight from the fire chief, I think it'd be great actually at a future council meeting or workshop to have a a brief update for the community about the planning commission and what its role is and how it operates. I, I think it is an enormously powerful position, particularly in Oregon. And I think it would be helpful to the community to better understand it. But again, I do want to stress that I reached out to John, talked to him, had a great conversation, fully support his reappointment. So nothing about this discussion that I'm hearing from Linda or, or Steve, I think goes to John as a candidate, but rather just the process and, and to the community interest in the commission at this particular time.
I, I don't think also that we should forget that the planning commission going forward, and I think Leila would support this, has some huge issues to tackle. Probably more so than most communities, certainly most communities on the coast, because we have undeveloped UGB land, it's going to be required to review. We have a comp plan that is, I guess, really it's woefully outdated, if you will. And so there are a number of things and ordinances that need to be updated. So it's a pretty important appointment. I think John fills those shoes really, really well. But going forward, I think we, as I mentioned, we just need to have it open and a process that's in the light of day.
Well, I just, the comment, I'd, I'd really like to support Jerry's suggestion of having the, the planning commission maybe come and present an overview of where they are. I think that's, I think that is a really good idea and it, it would be good for the council. I think it would be good for the community to hear, given what we've just talked about in terms of the complexity of the issues they face right now. So I just wanted to put a kind of
We haven't done this in a while, but I'm gonna propose that we have a joint planning commission city council meeting. We've done that before. We haven't done one in a while. And I want to remind everybody, the planning commission meetings are all public meetings, just like ours. So if you want to see what's going on there, just, well, right now, you just gotta zoom in with them. The, as I said this afternoon, the planning commission is really on the front lines and what's going on in the community. I served on the planning commission before I was on the city council. And I felt being on the planning commission was a tougher job than being a councilman. And one of the biggest things you learn being on the planning commission is you have to base your decisions on facts. It's gotta be based on facts. You can't turn down a planned development because you don't like what, what it looks like, or you don't think there's too much building going on in the community or whatever. You, you can't make suggestive decisions like that. And any decision that the planning commission makes on a development, the developer has the right to appeal to the city council. And if you've noticed, we haven't had too many appeals from the planning commission, which means they're doing their job. And if they don't like the answer that we give, then they go to Luba, which takes it to the Land Use Board of Appeals in the state of Oregon. And in this, we have some, we have a very, in my opinion, a very effective planning commission led by Karen Yorka. Karen's been on the planning commission for a long time. When I was on the planning commission, she sat next to me and she's now the chair. Before she was a chair, Owen Nicholson was the chair for probably 20 years. There's so much you have to know to be effective on the planning commission that it's when you bring a new person in to fill an opening with no experience, it's a challenge. And as I mentioned this afternoon, it's amazing how many people who've got, ended up on the council have come from the planning commission. The last 20 years, all of our mayors have come from the planning commission, including me. And it's, it's a real important function. I think the thing to do is to do another, do a joint session. A joint city, and maybe we can do that at our workshop or something, maybe next month. How's that sound? Is that sound like something we could do, maybe?
Uh, maybe not next month, but certainly early after that.
Whenever you could fit it.
Yeah.
When it makes
Well, and I'd like to, so in my past experience, when I was a community development director, we would actually do annual joint work sessions with planning commission and council, and we would actually set the work plan for the planning commission for the year. And so I think we kind of still have a little bit of work to do with this planning commission and with the council to set that work plan. But I think that would be a great opportunity to bring the council and the commission together. And then we can also do sort of a, of, you know, land use planning, planning commission, 101 sort of overview, which I could, I could help with, just to give folks a sense of like what the role of planning commission is and just frankly, kind of how land use works in, in a city like ours. Cause I'm, I'd say a huge amount of the questions that I get from community members are questions about the land use planning process. And so I'm, I'm a good person to answer those questions and to be glad to entertain that. So I'll take a look at the forecaster and work with the council to get a dual sort of a joint meeting going. And then I'll reach out to the chair of the planning commission as well. But I think that we should start to get that into our practice. And then we'll also, I think, probably have a follow-up conversation on appointments and how we want to do that moving forward to, feels like two outcomes from this discussion.
Excellent.
Sounds like we have a plan. Well, with that being said, and with a plan to make some changes and get together with the planning commission, could I get a motion to approve John tonight? And we'll move forward onto the next agenda item then.
I moved to appoint John Nansen to the planning commission.
One second.
We moved and seconded to reappoint John Nansen to the planning commission. All in favor, say aye. Unopposed? Yes, unanimous. Thank you all for the, that was a good discussion. Let's move forward to what we have next is a presentation from the Haylen Bay Fire District update from Chief Chris Besswick. And are you with us tonight, Chris?
Yes, I am.
We spent an hour with a great discussion this afternoon and we invited Chris to come back to the council tonight and I, I asked him if we could kind of do this a little condensed because we can't dedicate a full hour again this evening. So we take it away.
Okay, I'm gonna share my screen again. Once again, counsel, thank you for having me. It's always a pleasure to kind of share what we're doing. Can everybody see that presentation?
Not yet. There we go.
There you go.
Okay. Once again, thank you for having me. I want to start off by commenting on Ms. Miller's comment. If, Ms. Miller, if you're still on, please contact me directly. I want to hear more about that call specifically. There's, there's a few things you said that concerned me that I want to make sure I addressed. So I put my email in the, in the chat section, and that goes the same for anybody else in the community who's on. If you ever have a concern, please contact me directly. So I know what's, what's happening out there. I'm not on every call personally. So I like to hear about them. So with that being said, moving on, who we are, this is our, our our staff and we have five paid volunteer, I'm sorry, five paid staff and 20 volunteers currently. Of those, we have 13 combat firefighters, which are interior certified firefighters. We have six apparatus operators or drivers, and we have two new recruits that are currently going through training. In addition to that, we have two technical rescue teams. We have a water rescue team that is, consists of eight staff and volunteer members. And we have a rope rescue team that consists of seven staff and volunteer members. What we do, we're what we call an all hazards department. Essentially what that means is if you call 911, if it's anything other than a police matter, we're going to show up. So we do a lot of backcountry rescue or what we call pack outs. Emergency medical services, which make up the vast majority of what we do. We have a water rescue team. We perform high angle rescue. Water rescue and high angle rescue are both what they call low frequency, low frequency, high risk events. And we actually do quite a few of those in our, our area on a regular basis. Hazardous materials, like explained earlier, we're what they call responder level. We're not highly technical. We can essentially show up and hopefully stabilize the scene and then call in experts from further away. Vehicle extrication, unfortunately, we do a lot of this on our curvy roads. And community service, for example, our medical equipment loan program that we have in our main station. Community education. Unfortunately, this is taking a hit from COVID, but we're starting to get back into this, especially with the cool, the schools, various community groups. And a smoke detector program. Right now, we don't install or give away smoke detectors, but we will come out and clean them and check your batteries for you. Invalid assist, we do quite a bit of this. Either somebody's fallen and they can't get up or they need help out to their car, for example, to go to a doctor's appointment. We're just getting into the wildland fire scene. We went on five conferences this past summer. We're expecting more in the future. And of course, fire response, even though we're called firefighters, it makes up a very small portion of what we do overall. This year, this is our call volume to date. We've had 820 incidents in 2021. That is up 20% over last year. As you can see in their incident types, 17 of those were fires out of 820. The vast majority are EMS or rescue and then various other call types make up the, the rest of that. Like Ms. Miller commented, visitors do have quite an impact on our services. Out of those 820 calls, 245 of those involved non-residents. That's nearly one third. And those, that doesn't account for partial or part-time residents. Those are people that were just visiting our areas. The COVID impact this year, we kind of stepped out of our, our normal realm and we did some immunizations for the community. We did 27 programs between January and May and immunized, immunized 1468 shots were given to 764 recipients. As far as our training goes, a lot of people think that our volunteers just to show up and we throw them on the engine and send them to call. So that's not the case. Before they ever step foot onto an apparatus, they have to go through 110 hours of training just to become a combat firefighter. Before they ever step foot onto an apparatus, they have to go through 110 hours of training just to become a combat firefighter. And then on top of that, they have to do 70, 72 hours of continuous training every year. On top of that, if they're medical, they have 30 continuing hours of. Medical training on top of their 72. So we do a lot of training up there in that graph. You can see this year to date, we've done 95 classes. Which is 261 class hours for a total of 1917 student hours. And although you can't see it down in the orange, those are all the mandatory training categories that we have to hit throughout the year. There's quite a wide array. Our budget for this year, we work on a fixed ad valorem tax of a dollar 15 per thousand. This year's projected tax revenue is $1,362,349. We're very proud that in 2011, we started a 20-year bond to build two new fire stations. And as of July 1st of this year, we've paid 85% of those bonds off completely. And the remainder will be paid off before the end of the year. That's going to give us an estimated $100,000 in interest saved through the early payoff. Something we're very proud of and allows us to be financially stable moving forward. Over the past year, we have received over $400,000 in CARES Act money, federal grants and reimbursements. And I left out donations there as well. Those $400,000 in funds have allowed us to buy some new equipment. This first one is what they call Lucas device. That's a hands-off automatic CPR device. Primarily, we bought this for firefighter safety. As you can see in this picture, people standing up in the back of the ambulance. This allows us to, to remove those people standing up in the back of the ambulance, but remaining people can be seat belted. And it's very, very effective at giving chest compression. So we're having much better patient outcomes as a result. Next thing we got was a Polaris four-wheel drive UTV or utility train vehicle. This is set up with a fire pump and hold downs for backwards. We use this for trail rescues, beach rescues, fires on the beach, et cetera. And it's been a very, very. Versatile and handy unit that we're glad to have in our fleet. We also, this was purchased through a donation. This is our UAV or drone. Is, has some really neat capabilities. It has infrared. It can drop life vests out to somebody in the ocean. It has a 200 times zoom camera. It's, it's amazing for search and rescue and, and for overhead. Surveillance on, on fires and rescues, et cetera. It's been a great tool. We're happy to have that as well. This one has not been purchased on a, on a grant or, or such, but we did a supplementary budget to purchase this. This is what they call a wooi engine. Wooi stands for wildland urban interface. And we are adding this to our fleet. It's scheduled to be delivered in April of May or May of next year. And basically what a wooi engine is, is it does everything that our typical large structural engines can do. But it's just a little bit shorter and it's got a higher clearance and four-wheel drive. And this is specifically for. For use on our logging roads and for access for some of these wildland fires. So we're very, very happy to have that being added to our fleet. Moving on real quickly, some of the current issues that we're facing as a fire district that we've touched on a little bit already. Low volunteer roster. In this day and age, volunteerism is dropping off considerably. Our demographics really don't. They don't give us a huge roster of young firefighters ready to run into burning buildings. So that's, that although it's a national issue, our demographics make it a little more critical here. We get eight to 10 consistent responders out of our, our, our 20 that are on the roster. And our average turnout for a call is two to three volunteers. I'd like to see that number up more for the eight to 10 consistent. I'd like to see those eight to 10 show up on every call. That would be every non-medical call. We have one or two volunteers, which is all we really want to show up on, on medical calls. Coupled with that is the increasing call volume that we've talked about a little bit. Like I mentioned, 2021 call volume is 20% higher than 2020 was at the same time. And 2020 was 20% higher than 2019. So we're seeing this very large upward trend in the number of calls run. As we are, have a diminishing workforce to tackle them. And as Ms. Miller mentioned, our other major issue that we're dealing with our ambulance response delay, delays. The standard as written in the statutes is that. The ambulance should be able to respond to 80% of all calls within seven minutes. And 95% of all calls in less than 20 minutes. The current response time in the Manzanita area, the average time is 19 minutes. And frankly, that is just completely unacceptable. In the last two months, they've made that 20-minute response time on only 50% of calls, obviously way shorter than 95% that they're supposed to be making. There are some short-term and long-term solutions to this. We are working to rectify this problem. A lot of it is out of the hands of the fire district, but we are working on it. So. That's kind of a down and dirty rundown of what I covered earlier today in the workshop. So thank you guys very much and I'm willing to entertain any questions.
Any questions from the council? I know we had a lot of time with Chris today. If you don't have any questions, we can open it right up to the public to see if there's questions. No questions from the council? Nina, has anyone got their hand raised? Want to ask the chief a question?
I see no hands raised.
Oh, really? Okay. Well, you're just, you, you answered every question efficiently in 10 minutes. I gave you 10 minutes and you, you came right in within 10 seconds of that.
Wow.
To do that.
I talked really fast and left a lot out.
We got a hand raised. Here we go. Go ahead. Deborah, it's your turn.
Hello. I'm just curious, how many ambulances do we actually have available in our area in Manzanita?
That was a loaded question, Deborah. In the entire county, we have five ambulances that are supposed to be up at all times. One of those is manned, sorry, staffed in Manzanita. Unfortunately, Adventist is having major staffing issues. And as a result, the first one that is, is put out of service is the one in Manzanita. I would say that probably around 50% of the time it's that one staffed, which leaves four ambulances left in the county. And those are all dedicated to either EMS or running in their facility transports over the, over the hill in Portland.
So as, as a follow-up, is there, I know in some communities, they. Contract with private ambulance companies. Is that a possibility for. Manzanita so that we have more available? I mean, given our aging population, this just seems to me to be a huge concern.
We are currently contracted with Adventist Health. Adventist Health is who provides the ambulances and that's a county issue. So they have what they call an ambulance service agreement, which covers the entire county. And we are currently working on revising that, that agreement.
So it, it's pretty clear that you're aware of the problem and you're working on it, right, Chris? Cause it's, it can't stay the same.
It, it's reached a critical level. It cannot, it cannot continue. Yes.
Yeah, okay. But we don't have the answers yet.
Thank you.
Thanks, Deborah. Well, thank you, Chris. We appreciate all you're doing. I know you're working on that ambulance problem and. Thanks for coming back and giving us another 15 minutes after we already took an hour of your time this afternoon. So thank you very much.
My pleasure. Like, like, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt real quick. Like I mentioned earlier, if anybody has any concerns, please feel free to contact me directly. I'm always there for the public. The, our citizens are a number one concern. And, and we're doing everything we can. So if anybody has questions, please feel free to reach out to me.
Thanks, Chris. And I just wanted to give a quick shout out to you and your board. They just approved us to use their facility again for another year. For court. And so we just really appreciate the partnership with the fire district and it's not a small thing that you guys agreed to do that. So thank you for that.
It's our pleasure. Thank you.
Thanks again, Chris. Okay, we're going to. Move on to. Item B has been taken off the agenda and we're moving to item C, which is updating the emergency information for visitors resolution. Can you give us a background on that, Leila?
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. I take it, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. So this is hopefully fairly straightforward. The council passed resolution 1003 recently, which made some changes to our short-term rental ordinance. And this is one of the follow-up actions that comes with implementing that ordinance. What we're asking you today to do is to adopt a resolution that amend the emergency information requirements for short-term rentals. So each short-term rental has a certain amount of emergency information. It's actually been overdue to update that. So I think Lee is here tonight. Lee Hilton Brand helped Judy update those. And so. The information that's been updated includes updated tsunami information, updated information for emergency. Access, we are also now requiring a local agent be accessible 24 hours. So that information will also be added. And then. The additional request that we had for short-term rentals to add emergency communications and strongly recommending a landline. So the resolution 2118 addresses all of those changes that came out of that ordinance. And includes the updated information that will be requiring of short-term rentals to provide to visitors. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
If they'll have any questions on this item.
Leila, the one comment I might make is when I read through the. Emergency information requirements, it wasn't completely clear to me that. A responsible person, a local agent needs to be available 24 hours a day. It wasn't clear. I mean, it may be just the way I'm reading it, but I'm wondering if you want to just orderly or Judy. Clarify that to suggest that the person must be able to be contacted within, you know. It's not like they have 24 hours to respond. They have to be available when you.
Oh, yeah.
Call them. And so in the ordinance 10-3, it's very clear that they have to be available and, and it's a 20-minute response time and a bunch of other stuff. In the way that was worded, you know, somebody might say, oh, you know, they have to call me back in 24 hours. It, it's a small thing, but it might be worth just a quick noodling of the words.
Okay, the section three local agent states, the name and telephone number of the owner or local agent who can be reached on a 24-hour basis shall be posted in a conspicuous location. In the short-term rental. So is that language just not feeling super clear that?
Maybe it's me, but when I first read it, it just seemed like it wasn't. I know that we went through a lot of work on, in the original 10-3 work group. To ensure that someone would be available, like, and had to respond within 20 minutes, actually.
Yeah.
So I just want to make sure that that's clearly stated in the rules that you have for the emergency information requirements as well.
Yeah, no, that's a great point. I think that it is. I think the way I articulated it when I introduced it probably wasn't. So I think that's a good, that's a good point.
Any other questions? Sure. Any comments or questions from the public on this item?
I have no public comment.
Would someone like to make a motion to accept council resolution 2118 to. To amend this emergency information requirements?
I would like to do that, if that's all right. I'd like to propose a resolution of the city council of the city of Manzanita, Oregon. Amending emergency information requirements for short-term rentals and rescinding resolution number 1501.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve council resolution 21-18. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, say nay. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, next item, item D, approval of intergovernmental. Agreement with Oregon State Parks for police services. Leila, do you want to give us the background on that?
I do. So again, I've been working with OPRD as well as T-Parks to get this agreement put together. The agreement was, it's an intergovernmental agreement, so it's different. The last several times that y'all have approved this, it's been a contract form. So that's what's taken so long, just for folks to know that they had to change their procurement method. And so we've been. Gosh, since I got here, I've been going back and forth with them to get this agreement put together and we're at about a 98% draft at this point, which is what's attached. There's still some comments they're looking at as well, but nothing substantive will change. But this will provide services to Oswald West and the Haylen Bay State Park for fiscal years 22 and 23. We've been providing these services to OPRD since 1998, at least it's as far back as we know. And the agreement is 27,500 per year, and then we get a share of the citations once the county. And the state have taken their cut, we retain the citations from that. And the service that we provide is seven hours a week during June through August, so during the high season, and then four hours a week during the low season. I spoke with the chief about this as well, because there were some questions about whether or not we get appropriate cost recovery from this, and we do. So, so we feel pretty good about that side of it. And. I think that's really, that's really it. We have, as you well know, agreements with Wheeler and the Haylen. Those were approved, I think, back in May, executed in June. So we also have those agreements, which are in play at the moment as well. So we'll be back, if you, assuming you approve this, we'll be back in two years to update it. So with that, I'd be glad to take any questions.
Questions from the council?
Leila, I, I just have a question. In general, I think I understood everything and followed it well and it looks in good shape. But on a contract like this or an agreement like this that. Calls for seven hours a week during the high season. That sort of works out well if everything goes well while the. Police are patrolling the park and. You know, they could just sort of check boxes and go back to town. But what happens in, I don't know whether it's happened recently, but what happens in the event that there are. Significant incidents that involve. You know, more man hours and obviously investigative hours perhaps afterwards. I mean, is there any provision for. Elasticity there if the demand exceeds the seven hours a week?
You know, not within the contract, there isn't. So the contract just provides for us to do that. To do the patrolling. I think if we got called out on a call, that's kind of outside of it. So it's not, it's a service we would provide anyway, irregardless. So I don't think that we get kind of paid back if there's a call. That exceeds our seven hours. I think that we would, we would probably have to respond to that anyway.
Leila, I can, I can address some of that.
Oh, is Eric here? Oh, hey, Eric. Eric's on vacation and he showed up tonight. So kudos to you. Thank you.
We, we keep a time sheet. For how many hours that we spend in the state park. And those hours are. What's billed at the end of the year. So there might be times in the summertime where we might be nine hours. But then it might average out in the wintertime, maybe two or three hours. So it does, it does kind of fluctuate a little bit, but we look at the. The final hours per year and make sure that we're at that amount. If we don't reach, in the past contracts, if we hadn't, if we don't reach those hours, we don't get paid the full amount. So we made sure that we. Got those, tried to hit those hours right on if we could. And we're still a supplemental service. And so we don't get called out for. Things that happen in the state park. We will respond if we're on duty and a disturbance happens. But then Oregon State Police is the primary agency for those calls.
Okay, thanks.
I, I will say I was at least one of the counselors that reached out to Leila to get some information. We went back and forth with a couple of different things during this process. My number crunching of it would suggest that this is a favorable contract to the city. That, you know, those hours that you're seeing reflected in the matrix are minimum number of hours provided. But if you look at the. But if you look at the amount that we're receiving, I think there is some opportunities for the city to have more than the minimum hours and still recapture 100% of the cost recovery. My bigger issue is, and it's not even an issue necessarily associated with this, and it's not even really an issue, I shouldn't phrase it that way. And I'll say it every time I have the chance. This is another, for me, great example of how important it is sometime in the future to start establishing cost recovery targets that, you know, a lot of this can be dealt with. If we have pre-established cost recovery targets for these kinds of things, the Nahalem and Wheeler contracts, the building department, the planning, all the different things that we do that result in us recovering monies for the services provided, that we established cost recovery targets for each of those services, so that the, that the simple fact is that the staff can just look at the numbers, look at the target and reflect the appropriate numbers based upon that. So added to our long list of stuff that we will be looking at over the coming years, I hope that we can conclude establishing realistic and appropriate cost recovery targets. That's just one of my, I'm going to add that every time I can, just because it's a favorite topic, I guess. I don't know.
Just, just to give you an idea, the figures I came up with earlier this week, the average cost for the four of us average out for, per hour, benefits and wages came out to be $61.68 an hour. At the 364 hours came out to be just over $22,000 for costs of the city, which is about 5,000. We're getting about 5,000 more from the state for that. Our citation revenue, it kind of goes up and down. Some people don't pay, some people that don't show up, get their fines doubled, and then it goes to collections. So then we collect double on them. So it's kind of a, a hard number to figure out. But in, in the last, since 2017, it's averaged about 12,000, well, one, in 2019, we had over 16,000 in citations that we wrote. So 12 to 16,000 is probably a good, a good zone of citation amounts that we write for. And I know that we collected like 23,000 last year. So that was a lot due to people paying old tickets or collections coming in from people that had not paid and their fines got doubled. So 10 to 20,000 maybe is a good, a good zone to, to add to that 27.5 that we get from the state.
And I want to compliment the chief and his program for having those numbers. You know, sometimes it's not always reflected that we're capturing the data that we need to make good, sound decisions. But in this case, Chief Hearth and his group have done that. And I just want to extend my appreciation because it makes it easy to make decisions like that when you have the numbers.
Thank you.
Other questions on this from the council? Do you have any public comment or questions on this resolution?
I have no public comments.
Okay, we're ready for someone to make a motion here to approve this intergovernmental contract?
I'll, I'll move to approve Resolution Delegating Authority to the City Manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Parks and Recreation Department for Police Services.
The second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of approval of the intergovernmental agreement, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We're going to move down now to item E, which is a contract for an owner's representative services for the City Hall construction project. And Leila, why don't you bring yourself to speed on that one?
Well, this is so exciting, Mayor. For me, it should be for the city and for all of us. So I'm so pleased today to get to bring this item to you in particular. So I just want to highlight the reason why this is so important is this is, I think, the biggest step the city's taken in 30 years to advance towards a city hall, because I've been going back through the records and city councils have been talking about a city hall since the early 90s. So, so this is a big deal and y'all have done some rounds of, you know, design. But hiring an owner's rep is really a big step in the right direction. So we actually, we start really hitting the ground hard. So I'm very excited. We went through a very thorough process. So we did a competitive request for proposals process. So that's the full thing. We put it out on the bid network. We solicited as many folks that we know that did this kind of work. And we received four proposals from some really good swap quality firms. I mean, I was really pleased with the range of folks that applied for, for this, this, this job. It's kind of a thing when you get that kind of quality of firm applying. We selected three folks from that for interviews and three firms. And we based this election on, so we first evaluated the proposal. So it was myself, Counselor Spigman and Counselor Kozlowski that did the scoring. And we looked at things like what is their capacity and experience, their community engagement experience? That was kind of a really big thing for us. Their experience with civic facilities, experience with construction management, general contractor, it's a type of contract form, what their experience was working with contractors using that sort of contracting method, what methods they proposed and their cost. So those are the things that we evaluated before. We selected the top three and then we interviewed. And the interview had similar criteria. And then we selected the top firm. And the top firm was Klash Inc. And I have today, I think David Dwyer and Jim Williford are here today. And I would like it if they could take a moment here to introduce themselves and just talk briefly about what their role will be on the project. And then I'll go through kind of what the phasing of the project looks like and talk a little bit more about the contract details. So my screen's a little small because I have this up. But David or Jim, would you like to, I'll stop sharing for a moment and you can jump on screen. How does that sound?
Yeah, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
I don't. Can you see me?
We cannot see you.
Okay, well, I'll just say that both Jim and, oh, I'm getting a notice here. Hold on, Leila. Something telling me that I am, host is asking you to start your video. Okay.
Oh, there you are.
Okay, hey, hi, everybody. How are you? My name is David Dwyer. Super excited to be part of this project. Thank you for the introduction and to the mayor, to the counselors, to the community, those who are part of this process. We, I know I can speak for Jim and Klash Group. We are very excited to be part of this job. And, you know, based on the history of this job, I know everybody's super excited. I could see it, you know, in your eyes and the head nods. So we are dedicated to those project objectives and delivering a project for you, for this community that meets those goals. And whatever that means for us to do, we're going to bring all our resources and our experience. And you can see, you were sharing the screen for a moment there, Leila, but
Yeah, I can go back.
A little bit of our resume, that just, you know, some bullet points to, to look at. Yeah. You know, between Jim and I, Jim is a consummate professional, a ton of experience on the coast with civic jobs. A great articulate communicator, strong with community engagement, both of which we share that, that passion around bringing clarity where there's ambiguity and bringing, refining and honing in on problems and solving those problems creatively that are cost effective. So I say all that, that, you know, you can see the, the bullet points there on the, on the screen, some of the things we've done. I don't need to necessarily read all that, but I'll just say that we are super excited. We thank you for selecting us. It's very humbling to be part of this. We're, like I said, we're super excited, can't wait to get started. So anyway, Jim, you want to add anything to that?
I kind of stole all the thunder there, boss. I would say, yes, I'm also very excited. Really looking forward to engaging with the community and, and helping to build consensus and, and, and really start making traction with this project. So I can't wait to get going.
Right. Well, thank you both so much for being here. And as you can see from their CVs here, there's, there's a bit of experience in terms of development. So I know we're going to benefit a great deal from that. And just so far, I have to say, like negotiating contracts, these guys have been easy to work with and have helped kind of work through some complicated things. So that's always a good indication as you start to enter into a project. So I think we have our first meeting tomorrow and get, assuming everything goes according to plan tonight. We're looking forward to getting started. So just to kind of get folks up to speed too, we have, we have split the project into two phases. And I did want to highlight that here for an important reason, which is really so that the public understands too how this project will move forward. Because it is a huge milestone to get our OR on board. And then once the OR is on board, we're going to start doing things like preparing a project timeline and starting to really pull together what this looks like. I did want to highlight that we are splitting this into two phases. And I, when I do my update at the end of the night about where we are with City Hall construction project overall, kind of go through that PowerPoint I've been using for the last several months to talk about how this split works. And it's a little bit different than what I have been talking about in the sense that it slows down the process just slightly. And so phase one, the real focus on this is going to be master planning the site and getting the building to about 30% design. And I'll talk a little bit more later about why that is. But what we wanted to do is set this project up for success. And so concurrent to phase one happening, the council will be having discussions about financing and how we're going to pay for the project. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in my later PowerPoint. But I just wanted to highlight that we structured the contract to be in two phases. The council will determine when we move into phase two. And then that's when we complete design and we start moving into construction. So the Klash Group was really understanding of why it was important for us to sort of break this into two phases. I think it will set us up for success. And they just had some really great ideas about how we can advance through phase one. And so I'm really looking forward to leveraging all that brain power between Jim and David to get us to a project that's just not only affordable, but is just awesome and that we're able to build, you know, in a, in a meaningful timeframe. Because every day that goes by just changes things. So we're looking forward to getting really kicked off. So with that, and I'm also happy to take any questions. I think David or Jim would too. But we are asking you to approve this resolution authorizing me to execute the agreement with Klash in an amount not to exceed 126,038.
Does all have any questions for, for Leila or the two gentlemen from Klash?
Leila, if, if you could just very briefly, for the benefit of the public, just tell us a little bit more about the concept of an owner's representative. I feel like having been part of the process, you schooled me on it and I understand it myself, but it does, it is a hard concept to understand if you're not familiar with this kind of a project. And it's somewhat different perhaps from a project manager, which we had utilized earlier in this project. And so could you just let us know why this is a, not only a good deal for the city, but a, a critical expenditure?
Oh, sure. And thank you for reminding me to do that. And I'm going to go back to these guys just for a moment to highlight that one of the main things that when you bring somebody in who's an owner's rep is the experience and construction that they have. So oftentimes, these folks are really schooled in this stuff. They've been in the business, they've either been contractors or they've been involved. So they bring such a high level of knowledge in terms of the development process. And they end up being, you know, their owner's representative. So they, you know, they work for us. They're there to ensure that our interests are being met. And they speak the same language as the contractor and as the architect. I speak a little contractor and a little architect. But as you can see, I've now got 50 years of experience behind me with folks that actually understand some of the really detailed stuff, which actually leads to things like cost savings. And the old adage I've heard is that an owner's rep, you should save as much money as you're spending on your owner's rep through the process. And I feel extremely confident that with these two gentlemen working with me, that we will achieve that. So what they will do is really, they do a lot of, they, they really serve as my main kind of, my main cabinet of folks. They help me design the budget. They help design the timeline. They know from their experience, a lot of things that could go wrong, that will go wrong, that should go wrong and can help prepare us and me for those uncertainties. And by working through the budget, being very iterative through that budget, they will also help me set up all of the community outreach and engagement. So really an essential kind of right arm to me and in the development process. Because I think that folks, you know, a development like this is, it takes a lot of time and it takes a lot of, of effort and coordination and organization. And so the owner's rep really takes on a lot of that sort of data day. So in a good example, a simple example of what an owner's rep can do is when you get through the design process, you invariably have to go through a process called value engineering, where you get your first cost and you're like, whoa, that's more than we can afford. And so you go through a series of, of sort of processes where you are kind of eliminating or changing things. And so having someone like David or Jim at the table is that they can help evaluate all those different options. Say if we have to change a type of material on, you know, the siding on the exterior of the building. These guys work with the architects. They come up with all the different options. They, through their experience, can evaluate, that's no good, this is good, this is okay. Then they can give me the advice of like, here are the options, here's why we cut these, here are the things we think would work, and here are the pros and cons of those. And then that allows me as the owner to make an informed decision. And their experience and understanding of, you know, construction, construction materials, all of those things really bring so much value, because then I can make an informed decision as opposed to trying to figure out and guess all that stuff myself or rely on a contractor to tell me, oh, this will work. Or an architect who might want a fancier siding that may not hit my budget mark, they can really help us through a lot of that. So that's just like one tiny example of just, I think, the deep value that an owner's rep brings. And it should give the city, it certainly gives me confidence as the sort of chief agent of the city on this project, that I'm going to build you something that we can not only afford, but that has the best materials in there that we could possibly get. And that with, with having these two gentlemen at our side, I feel like we will be really well positioned for a very successful project. So hopefully that helps describe some of the, the value that these folks bring to the table.
Thanks.
Any other questions from the council here?
I just had one quick comment for Leila and that is to make certain that the draft agreement has been looked over by our city attorney.
Oh, yes. Yes, and you should know.
I figured the answer is yes, but.
Oh, yes. Yes. Yeah, you should know that, that like anything that comes to you at this point forward has been thoroughly reviewed by the city attorney, but thank you for pointing that out, councilor.
Okay, is there any comment or questions from the general public on this issue?
I have no public comment.
Okay, well, it's time to move forward and approve this resolution authorizing the city manager to execute this personal services contract. Can I have a motion from someone?
Linda, you're muted.
I, I will move to approve the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a personal services agreement with Klash Inc. for the purpose of providing owner's rep representative service in the amount not to exceed $126,038. And I just have to put an extra exclamation point behind that. This is a really great team and I think we're going to get huge value from that investment.
Awesome, thank you. And we take that seriously and we will earn our keep. We do every job, definitely. So thank you for your trust and confidence in us.
So I need a second on the motion?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute this contract. All in favor, say aye? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, say nay. Unanimous approval. Thank you very much. And we look forward, I'm pretty excited to go forward. This kind of stuff gets you excited.
It feels really good.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, gentlemen, we're going to, and ladies, we're going to move forward to item F, which is we're going to, to add, part of this process, this is declaring the old City Hall property at 543 Lenita, surplus property, required to hold a public hearing. So I'm going to adjourn the city council meeting. And as of 7/11, I'm going to open up a public hearing on declaring this property surplus. 7/11 this evening. Okay, do we have anyone from the public who wants to make a comment about us declaring the property at 543 Lenita as surplus property?
I have no comments, mayor.
Well, just wait a minute here. Put a chance, case someone wants to say something.
While we're waiting, I could just note that we're not actually required to hold a public hearing, but the council agreed and I suggested that we should. This is an opportunity, is good practice for the community to have an understanding and an opportunity to weigh in should they choose to. No harm if they don't, but that's to think good practice and appreciate the council being open to having this hearing tonight.
Okay. Well, it looks like we don't have any comments, so I'm, as of 7:13, I'm going to close the public hearing and reopen the city council meeting. And with that, now we're going to discuss the properties. Why don't you tell us what we're doing?
Well, what I'm asking you to do today is to pass a resolution that would officially declare the property surplus. And that would basically authorize me to move forward with selling it. I just kind of wanted to highlight for the community, just to remind folks of kind of what and why. The property has been vacant since 2020. I think we're all aware that there's some mold and other environmental contaminants that were discovered. The staff are now in the temporary facility, which will be in for a while. The facility has been outgrown for years. In fact, I was looking back at documents from the 1990s. And there was even a committee forum back then to look at acquiring adjacent property, to expand City Hall. This was in 1997. So, and then we purchased the property at Underhill, I believe in 2017, for the express purpose of buying a City Hall. So the discussion has been, we'll sell this to help fund the new City Hall. So, so the resolution also includes information in there that ensures that whatever proceeds that come from the sale of this property will be put into the City Hall Expansion Fund. So yeah, the action tonight is for, for you to consider and approve a resolution that would declare the property surplus. And I'll stop sharing.
So is there any questions from the council? We got this, we're being asked to approve resolution 2121. It's a resolution of the city council to declare the real property owned by the city at 543 Lenita as surplus and authorizing the city manager to sell the property for the purposes of funding a new City Hall.
Don't move.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All right, further discussion? All in favor of this resolution, say aye.
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 Does anyone oppose, say nay? Okay, thank you.
I will make one comment, mayor, and this is more for the good of the order. And that is that the Public Works Department go and grab the Manzanita City Hall sign at their convenience, because I could see us incorporating that into a new building as some sort of a, I mean, we've all looked at that from at least.
If you haven't noticed, that is now hanging over our new temporary City Hall.
Oh, is it already gone?
I had to move it.
Oh, okay. I had, I had to ask about that way back when we were, for something else. And it was still there the last time I looked, so.
I don't know when they did it, but I know.
I was getting confused. I was getting confused and trying to tell people where to come. I'm like, City Hall, and they'd show up on Lenita. So I had, I had Dan move it, I think about two weeks ago.
Oh, wow. Okay, well, we should save it though, because I think that there might be an opportunity in a new building to historically have it as just kind of a fun thing to have.
Yeah, it's a cool sign. It looks really good out front.
You can't miss it because it's good size compared to the size of the building. It's way oversized. But anyway.
We like our little building. It's fine for now.
And we're going to move on to item G, which the discussion is how we're going to put this piece property up for sale. And we spent a little, well, quite a bit of time this afternoon discussing our options on that. And I, I think we kind of all kind of came to consensus, but let's review what we talked about. You want to review what our two options are again, Leila?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. So yes, so I'm asking council for direction today on how to sell the property. There are two key options that we have, a bid process and sort of a traditional broker process. The bid process is pretty staff intense. We'd have to hire somebody, likely a broker to help us with the transaction anyway and pay them on an hourly basis. We would set a minimum price and then we would accept field bids, go through those bids, take the highest bid effectively and go through that process. But that requires that staff, which is me, is out there marketing the property and doing kind of all the legwork around it. So it's not a small thing. But I'm also not a broker, so I'm not sure that my process would generate the most revenue. So the other approach would be getting a broker who does this for a living. They are paid out of, as a commission, so they don't get paid unless the property actually sells. And so I think that those are the two kind of key options that we discussed this afternoon. And looking tonight for council to make a motion to direct me on which method to use to sell the property.
So we have some more discussion. It sounded like we were moving towards getting a broker to help us sell this property. Because I, as I mentioned this afternoon, if we were a larger municipality where we had lots of property and doing a bid might make sense, but we're, I think we need to custom massage this thing to get it sold, is my feeling. But Hans, I'm going to defer to you. What do you think we should do?
Well, how about this? I move that the council directs the city manager to negotiate a listing contract with a commercial real estate broker to list and market and hopefully sell the surplus property at 543 Lenita. I think it's the right way to go. It's maybe a little bit more expensive if we have a successful result, but there's zero cost if we need to pause, delay, change course. It's commission and mission only. No professional fees unless there's a successful conclusion.
Well, you're not spending city manager time either, so that evens that out.
Yeah.
But if that was a motion, I would be more than happy to second that.
Moving second. Any other discussion on this?
I think we're on. I just want to repeat some. We had a little bit of a discussion at the work session. And Hans assured us that we probably have at least a few brokers to choose from. I don't, I think it would be a healthy process if, if we pass this motion, if we were able to shop around the opportunity to two or three or four brokers. And it does sound like we have those possibilities, Hans.
I think at least a couple. What I'd be happy to do is meet with city manager and not only recommend a couple of brokers, but I would be happy to recommend a couple of real estate brokers who may also have different recommendations. And they would be happy to put their two cents in. There may be some ideas out there that I'm not aware of. I mean, we pretty much all know who the pool of folks are, but there may be somebody in town who's working in residential real estate who knows a great story of a commercial broker that I, that isn't on my radar. So finding available brokers will not be a, it's very doable.
All right. Hans, can I ask? You talk about coastal commercial brokers, and I'm one, you know, the last few developments that we've had have actually come out of Portland, where they brought Commercial Ventures. I'm thinking of the winery, and I know there's some interest in a brew process or something on another piece of property. But those are all coming out of Portland developers or Portland owners. Would there be some, should we have some consideration about looking at Portland as a potential commercial broker rather than a coastal broker? I'm just throwing that out there for.
Well, I don't want to dig too down, too deep into the weeds there, but I think there's a fair chance that the representative for a buyer for that property being on Lenita would be a coastal broker. And especially in the commercial realm, I wouldn't say that there's a lot of animosity between regional brokers and Portland brokers, but there is a little bit of that. So it's just something to consider that if it is listed exclusively by a Portland firm, it will be less appealing and perhaps less inviting to a local broker that has a commercial client that's interested in the property. So in general, I think that there, there is competence in that realm here on the coast. And I think that a local broker can do as well, if not better, a job given some of the unique aspects to marketing property in a market where the land cost is extremely high, the construction is somewhat challenging, and the rents are challenging.
Thanks.
Well, I think between Hans and our new owner's rep and Leila, I think you guys are going to come up with a great solution on how to get this thing sold. So any other questions? Any other comment? It's been moved and seconded. Shall we go to the vote?
I do see, I do see a hand raised, mayor. I don't know whether you want to take that now or not.
Okay, go ahead.
I just have a quick question. Has the property been appraised? Or how are you going to determine the selling price?
Yes, thanks, Donna. We did have an appraisal done. If you want to see it, it's part of the council packet from last month.
Okay, great. I'll look at it. Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to direct the city manager to sell the property using a real estate broker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, say nay. Okay. Got that on track. Okay, we got a couple of items of old business. And then we're going to have to swing back and hit that consent agenda again. Don't let me forget. So Leila, are you going to give us a City Hall construction update? I don't know how much you can add to what we already did tonight, but.
Oh, you know, I can add some stuff. I do want to quickly address a comment that Linda made. Linda Kissner? I'm sorry if I'm butchering your name, Linda.
Kissner.
Kissner, thank you. She asked, my only question is, where will the ballot box go? That's a great question. We'll probably have it relocated in front of City Hall here. So I'll work on that with Public Works and we'll make sure to make an announcement of where the ballot box. It's funny you ask that because I was actually thinking about that last night. We didn't have any elections locally, but like, where is the ballot box going to go? So it's a great question.
Leila, you might also need to reach out to the tax folks because I think that's printed on a lot of different information, the actual address of the ballot.
Call Tansy O'Neil from county. Make sure you run that by her. It's her box. We probably shouldn't.
Yeah, I wouldn't assume.
Not her knowing about it.
I would call the elections office before I do anything, but that's a great point, councilor. I'll just.
Address is just, she's going to have to change a lot of documents, son.
I know. That's probably why it hasn't been done yet. Okay, I'll, I'll get in touch with her. Appreciate that heads up. Cool. Okay, I'm going to quickly do a PowerPoint here. Mostly just take the camera off of me. Okay. So just a quick update. I first wanted to start by saying thank you to the Tillman Beekeeper Association. They donated five trees to the city of Manzanita. I think it was coordinated by Will Stone, so a big thank you to Will. These are two images from the Underhill site of trees that were planted by the beekeepers. So we just want to say thank you to Will and the Beekeeper Association. And then Leroy Hepner and his landscapers at Eagle Landscaping, that, that their equipment and time to install it. So four trees were planted at Underhill and one at the city park. And little fact that they shared, I'm terrified of bees, but I love bees because they're super important to our ecosystem. But one full grown flowering tree equates to an acre of flowers. So we have four acres of flowers now on our, our City Hall future site. So that's pretty awesome and really appreciate Will reaching out and coordinating that gift with us. So just to kind of, you know, now that we've made this big move, I just kind of wanted to go back through my sort of rainbow of Phase One process and just give everyone an update because we've actually, we've done some other things in the, in the last month as well. So just kind of reminding folks, Phase One and Phase Two. Remember, we kind of had our rainbow of things that have to happen to help us sort of divide up what the different tasks are that kind of lead us into Phase Two. So first is building the team. Tonight was a, was a milestone moment. We welcomed Klosch Group to our team and Klosch is going to help us build the rest of the team. So the next key step is really hiring the project architect. And then I will work with David and Jim to look at the schedule and figure out what makes the most sense in terms of hiring our construction manager, general contractor. And just to like over inform you, as I like to do, the point of having a CMGC early is that they can help participate in the early design and guide us on constructability issues as well as being at the table for pricing. So I'll work with the Klosch Group and kind of figure out what makes the most sense to get that, that part of our team together. But their next real key step will be hiring the project architect. Site work. So some of you all remember from last month that we had the folks coming out to do the site remediation. That work is done. I'm pleased to say that the soil samples that came back, came back negative. So the site is now clean and the consultant is in the process of working with DEQ to close our file. Once that's complete, then we can move forward and complete the Phase One environmental assessment. So that's also going to be underway. The site has been backfilled and we're really pleased about that. So that was a really nice piece of news to get last week.
So Leila, does that mean that there was no leakage out of the existing tank that it had? So we had no leakage into the soil?
We did. We removed, so that's a great point. So we removed a whole bunch of soil. And then we tested everything around it. And there was no contamination. So whatever was contaminated, we were able to get out and remediate. And that was our gut, was that it hadn't, you know, because it had been decommissioned, that there probably wasn't a whole lot of leakage, but you got to get in there first to make sure.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions about that? If they come up later, don't hesitate to ask. So selling Old City Hall. So we made some big moves tonight. I'm so pleased. The appraisal, as we know, is complete. I submitted an application to the State Historic Preservation Office for determination of, of that building. And I will know by November 11th. If I hear nothing from them, then our application is approved and we can proceed. If I do hear from them, we'll inform you about what next steps are next month. And then we've had our public hearing. So I assumed it was going to be complete when I did this PowerPoint. So I'm pleased that it is. And now our next step is to sell it, move the election box and get rid of some of the stuff that's in the building. So we'll be, I'll be working with Public Works to start getting that building cleared out. So I like lists. I put this together. You guys recall this, you know, what is the action, what is the outcome? So we're building the team. The idea is to get the team to advance the project through design and construction. The site work, the site is ready and it's development ready. And then the Old City Hall is sold and we can set those funds aside. So I've crossed some things off my list. This feels super good to me. I'm very happy about that. But there's still more on the list, as you can see. So I just kind of want to remind folks of the blue and the purple. So we're about to start. Um, so we're about to start getting into that phase of the project and just to kind of remind folks, schematic design is really the high level design um process. And so the goal is, the outcome is that we have a building that's designed with input from the community that's cost effective and it delivers on our project goals. That's the goal. And that we also have a financial strategy in place to fund the building. So these things are gonna be happening concurrently. And it's really important that we talk about this because I get this question a lot and like what came first? The budget or the building or the building or the budget? Is it the chicken or the egg? And my argument is like, well, they kind of shared a cab to get here, so we don't really know. Um, but you know, generally you have some sense of like scale. Um, so the point of doing it this way is that we get, we start the design process, even if we don't entirely know how much money we have or can spend. The design process allows us to really thoroughly vet what we need. So preliminary building concepts, including like the building program, where the building's gonna sit. And I should go back to that building program means like what do we need inside of the building? Like what offices, what shared space, what public space, what are the, all of that. And I think in a post-COVID world, um we're operating a little differently. And so we need to really dive deep into those things so that we are designing a building that can meet our needs now and into the future. But the now is a lot different than it was when y'all were contemplating this two years ago. So I just want to acknowledge that. There's gonna be a lot of work that goes into that and that takes time. So it'll be conversations mostly internally about what do we need? The external conversations come when we have that information and we share what we think we need and what the building should look like. So there will be um some, quite a bit of community engagement around that. And that's one of the first tasks I'll be working on with our owners rep is what does that community engagement strategy look like? And then once our architect's on board, um, then we'll have a lot more to go on. Um, we'll be doing some evaluation of the background materials. A lot of good materials to start with. Um, but one of the big goals that we have for this first phase is doing a framework plan for the whole site. So we'll be reaching out to the community and talking to folks about what, what do we do with this whole site? We have a building, we have an office building we need to build on a part of it, then we have the rest of it. And so this is a really wonderful opportunity for us to go out and ask that question. Um, I've heard from some folks in the community um who have asked or have assumed that we kind of already know what's happening on this site and we really don't. We're starting from scratch frankly. And so I think that's a really good opportunity for us to go out and ask the community and engage with the community around what, what has this site become as far as our, you know, our, our whole community is concerned? And then we also are looking at, um, we're also looking at the building itself. And the reason why we're only getting to thirty percent schematic design is because that gives us enough information to do a thoughtful pricing exercise. And my hope is that that will come um concurrently to the discussions that we will be having with respect to a financing strategy. But the first thing we do is gotta get all our ducks in a row. And then we're gonna talk about what the financing strategy is. This is one of my favorite kids books, uh Make Way For Ducklings. I just had to find a way to put it in there, but that's what we're trying to do. Get all our ducks in a row. What do we need? How big is this building gonna be? What is gonna happen with the site? At the same time, talking with council about a financing strategy where we're identifying sources and uses and we develop a financial strategy and plan. And then it would be council's decision to determine whether or not we are ready to enter into phase two. And the reason why I um, and I sort of, I fish this out to some colleagues and friends in the industry. Um, thirty percent design gives us far enough along that we know what we're trying to get to, to give us that price estimate. But it's not so far along that we can't change or readjust if we find, say, that the budget numbers aren't matching up with what we can afford. So it's a good point for us to stop and pause and uh try to get those two things to meet. And it could be that we have sufficient resources for the building that we've designed. But I wanted to make sure that the process was set up to respect the relationship between the financing and the construction of the building. And so that's what I propose to do. This council will decide, like I said, when we enter into phase two. Um, because at that point, my hope is that the council and the community have a clear understanding of what the true costs are, because we've talked a lot about costs since I've been here and with all respects, like the numbers that we've been throwing around from twenty eighteen are no longer relevant. Um, nothing's really relevant anymore. The only thing that will be relevant is a new look at this and a new cost estimate based on all of the factors that are influencing construction today. And I just want to make that really clear. It's super important that we get current relevant data so that when you make your decision, you know, we all kind of know how much is it gonna cost and where is the money coming from? And then we move into phase two. So that's, that's my pitch and that's why we worked on the contract with the OR the way that we did. We'll be setting up the architectural contract very similarly. I believe if you do those things together well, you're gonna lead to a shovel-ready project. I just really believe that. Um, so like I said, kind of all of these things have to come together in order for us to enter into phase two. So just to kind of reassure the community that we are being thoughtful and mindful of every step that we're taking. Uh, we will be sharing again, you'll just be bored to death of me, but I will be sharing every month kind of where we are and how we're tracking. And then working with the council over the next many months on a financial strategy. And so I expect we'll probably be meeting a little bit more. Be talking to the council about that at some point. Um, but I think it's gonna be really important for us in order to stay on track. But I do believe that this has set us, this will set us up for success. Okay, so that, that's my update.
So Leila, may I ask you a quick question?
Absolutely.
So I, so I'm um, uh, first of all, I think the, the way you proposed it is excellent. I think uh getting a, a real understanding of what we want and, and managing that along with what we can afford is, is an excellent way to go about it. I'm, I'm, I'm just kind of confused about a schematic design. Um, do, do we have, does an architect come in and help us with that schematic design? Is it, do we look at what we've done in the past and kind of play with it? It kind of, what, what exactly does that look like? And then my second question is, in uh, I, I think you've talked about going out to the community to do a master site plan so that we can have a really good conversation about what we want that property to look like. Do we talk after that about where we site the building? How does a building site kind of work into, to those discussions? So if, uh, if you could help me with those two, that would, I'd really appreciate it.
Yeah, sure. Um, those are great questions, um, Councilor Kuzlosi. So the first question is, we will hire an architect. I think it's essential. Uh, so that's actually one of the first tasks I'll be working with Clash on is, is hiring of the architect. Um, they'll be an essential part of the team, but their contract will be set up similarly to Clash's where we have sort of phase one. And then we have phase two. And that's to protect us as much as it is to protect the architect as well. So they understand kind of walking in how this is gonna work. I will say it's not super uncommon, just so you know. I've talked to a couple architects and they're like, oh, we work with cities all the time and this is this is par for the course. So we're not doing anything that's like crazy. It's actually really, I think, smart. Um, so the architect uh will lead us through that framework design. It will include siding of the building as part of that framework plan. So it's sort of like, we, I think we would probably start there. It's just sort of where does the building fit? Roughly. And you sort of cordon that side off and then you look at the rest of the site and how does it interact with it? You need an architect to do that. I could wave my hands and do urban design pretty well, but I'm not an architect, so.
Well, that's really, that, that makes me feel really good. That's, I like, I appreciate that. Thanks, Leila.
Yeah. Yeah. And the goal is, is that um we hit the ground running, like so that when we understand um, when we balance what we can afford and what we need and those two things have come together, we just launch. We don't have to go through all of this. As you can all see, it, it takes, it takes a fair amount of time to do a competitive RFP process to go through and get the best teammates. Um, it takes a few months to go through each one of those processes. And so I think getting us to the point where we understand roughly what it's gonna cost, where things are gonna go, I think will be a really great step forward for the community.
So do we have a timeline on when we're gonna uh start the RFP process for the architect?
That's our first job with Clash is to do that. So I have some ideas, but I don't want to throw anybody under the bus right now, so. I'm gonna talk to them. My hope is by next month, we'll have a preliminary timeline, if not certainly by January.
Okay.
Well, one thing uh you mentioned, and I think it's important to reflect on, is that even though we did it in two thousand eighteen, a lot of work was done by two separate architectural firms regarding schematic design. I recognize that the world has changed since two thousand eighteen and I totally appreciate that. So some of what we have done in the past will not be relevant any longer in terms of workflow and how we handle business, day-to-day business. But I think we'd be really remiss if those schematic design parameters that had been developed uh and formalized are not shared both with the owner's rep relatively soon. And ultimately with any architectural firm that you engage, uh, at least as a starting point. Because otherwise, all that we went through uh would have, you know, would have been wasted and maybe, maybe because of the changes in life, it, it will be. But um, I just want to make sure that we, we've got a lot of work done in terms of what life was like at least then. Uh, and it was done by professional firms and I encourage us to use it as kind of a foundation to start building on.
Well, you know, the other thing, Steve, which is, that's a really good point. The other thing is there was a lot of staff input.
Right.
What, what was gonna happen inside? And I'm not sure it's gonna remain the same, but it's a really good place to start.
Right, yeah.
And reevaluate. So that's a great point.
Yeah, for sure. And thank you for mentioning that. Just to clarify, I think I sped through it on my slide, but absolutely, there's been a ton of background work done on this building and none of it will go to waste. Um, we'll be overloading our consultants with information um here too. Because I agree, I think there's some value in a lot of that and there's no need for us to start from scratch and we can start with what we have and then augment that with what we know now.
Yeah.
I, I am particularly pleased with the comment you made about um a overall site review and a site plan. Something we sorely lacked in the first go-round and I think each of us has ideas about how we look like. So I will be uh interested to see how you pull that one off in terms of getting everyone's ideas out on the table and a discussion uh occurring on what it finally ends up um being. So, good luck.
No shortage, no shortage of excitement in our future.
Or ideas.
Well, that's part of it. And that's why you hire good architects to come in and help facilitate that with the community and get, you know, you start to see themes come out when you work with the community in this way. And so I'm really excited to get this part started. Um, and I think that there'll be some lessons that we learn on this site that could translate citywide. So I think it's a good way for us to start listening um and working together. I mean, one thing I will point out and I'll probably say it again and again and again is that we're not gonna figure out a funding strategy to build everything that we decide on this framework plan, but it gives us a roadmap that we can start to work towards grants and other ways to implement um what happens on the site. But I really believe that we need to have a clear sense of what the community uh wants on that site, how it can fit in with our office building and then the relationships between the two. So I'm excited about it.
The, the final comment I'll make is uh my appreciation. I don't know totally who's responsible, but I guess I could make a guess. But the graphics and the presentation is a step above anything we've seen in the past by anyone.
Wow.
And I, I think that from my own perspective, yes, the council people, we get our agenda packets and we read through it and we got it all in front of us. But for the general audience watching tonight, I think the way that that was presented and I hope it continues into the future was exceptionally well done. Not just on this last project. I'm talking about every single agenda item you brought forth, some PowerPoint presentate, PowerPoint presentations that made it understandable and put the key facts out in front of us. And I just kudos to you and whomever else was involved in the, the development of that. So.
Love the ducks. The ducks were great.
Uh, thank you so much.
Yeah, just, I appreciate that. Just a real quick update. What, what we are going to be doing in terms of the city hall um presentation is that Leila's presentation will go on the website after each council separated out from the whole council agenda so that if you have interest in where we are on the uh city office building project, it will, the summary will be there along with her PowerPoint. So uh, it will be, is, the information will be easily accessible on the website. Thank you, Josh.
Thanks, Josh and Linda. And I've been working on my ums, so Josh has to edit fewer of them out.
Okay, hey, we've done a lot of good things here tonight. Uh, and we got one more thing to talk about and that's the visitor center update, uh, which we, another item that we spent a considerable amount of time talking about today at the workshop. I, I feel we kind of had a consensus on where we want to go next with that unless somebody's got another idea. But i- it sounds to me like we're gonna get some input from Dan Hagan and Nan Devlin from uh Oregon Tillamook Coast to hopefully find someone to take on the visitor center part-time and then we're gonna develop, go into a process to, what, what was the name of the process again, Leila? Do you remember that we're gonna do?
Oh, yeah, um, destination management. Yes. Yeah. And we had talked with Nan about.
Yeah, we've come to the conclusion promoting tourism is not where we want to be right now. We want to manage what's going on down here. Um, destination management is what they call it. And uh, we're gonna have to spend some time working on that and coming up with a plan. Just another thing to put on our plate, but uh any other discussion on that tonight? Is that pretty much the way everybody feels? I, that was the impression I got this afternoon. That's kind of the direction we ought to take.
Yeah, if I could just reiterate, so I make sure I fully understand. But I think what we had landed on was the idea of hiring an interim person to fill in at the visitor center. Nan would assist me in, in finding candidates. We would do, you know, we would select a candidate based on an application process, I think, even through the interim position. And then um we would work with uh, with Tillamook Coast, um, visit Tillamook Coast to do this destination management plan. Um, we, like Mayor said, we had a great conversation about that at the work session. And I think everyone's in agreement that we need to manage visitors to ensure livability for folks that live here and those that visit here and that that's really the focus. Um, and so I think there's a lot that we can get from that and that gives us a strategic plan, which will include what does the future of the visitor center look like? And then we would hire a permanent person, um, again, through a process uh for that position as well. So I think that's what I, what I walked away from that meeting with. Um, and I do want to acknowledge and thank the county, um, the Visit Tillamook Coast folks, just um, they're subject matter experts in this. They've been extremely helpful to me and just their willingness to support us during this transition has been, um, it's really meaningful.
So I, I don't think we need a resolution or anything. I think we have consensus on the direction we want to go. It's gonna take us some time and, and uh, we'll just take it as it comes. Is everybody okay with it?
I think it's really exciting. I think it's a really good next step.
Right. I do too. So let's go back to the consent agenda.
Good job.
This is, I think a lot of city council meetings and I never got hung up on the consent agenda like we have tonight.
I'm sorry.
First for everything. It's all your fault, Nancy.
Partly, my, uh, just partly.
Let me review here. We're trying to approve the minutes from October sixth and uh bills for payment. We already uh took out the appointment of uh John Nance of the Planning Commission. We dealt with that.
I, I have had a chance to, to skim through uh to my comfort level anyway with the uh bills for payments and, and I'm comfortable moving that we accept the consent agenda.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to consent, accept the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I hope nobody's opposed.
That'd be fun.
Yeah, then we'd be starting, because you can't, you, it has to be unanimous to accept the consent agenda. So uh, I think we're down to the city manager report. Do you have anything else? You've given us a lot of stuff.
I got like an hour's worth of updates. Just kidding. Um, and just for the record, so folks in the community know, we updated the packet, so the, the packet should have the bills if you're interested uh online. Just quickly, um, not much to say. I think I did it earlier, but just again, a shout out to um the Hamlet Bay Fire District. Uh, they've allowed us to hold court there since COVID started. They've agreed to allow us for another year if the option to renew for another year. So I'm hoping the. So I'm hoping they'll let us stay until we get our city hall where we can actually have court in our own building. So I'm, I'm not sure what we do without that partnership. So it's just, it's super important and I just want to thank them. I also want to acknowledge the lady behind the curtain, Nina Iello. She completed our conversion to our new finance software. We were in the process of converting. It is now fully converted and she's psyched on all the reports she gets to make for me now. So anyway, this is a big deal. Nina's really been leading that effort and working with the staff that have different modules that are associated with that. And so that's just a big leadership role for her and she's been doing a great job. So I just want to give a shout out. I know this is not fun stuff that most people care about, but it is, it's a big deal for us. And we are trying to move to more of a 21st century model, which I'll talk about in upcoming meetings. This is a big step towards that. So kudos to Nina and the team. I hope to do it tonight, but it's gonna probably happen next month. That we'll be moving, so we'll still be staying on Zoom. So let me make that clear. We will be on Zoom. We're gonna be moving to the webinar format starting in December, which just will look a little different. You'll log in the same way. You'll have the code the same way. The agenda will be set up the same way. It will just be set up so that all you're seeing is city council and staff. And it allows us on the backend to manage the meeting a lot easier. So folks will still be able to participate. You'll still be able to provide public testimony and all of that. We just promote you to what we call the panel and then we promote you down. So I just want to let folks know it'll look a little different when you log in, but all the things are the same. It's just a much more efficient and frankly, professional way to do it. And it allows us, it just, it just protects us better from weird anomalies, which can happen sometimes when you meet in this sort of forum. So I just wanted to let folks know that. We will also not be having a planning commission meeting this month. And that's all I got.
So webinar will be in December? Leila, is that what you said?
Yes, and it'll be our first go-through with it. So just begging your patience in advance. I think it'll be fine. You won't notice, but I just thought I'd mention it.
Well, before I adjourn, I just want to say I think everybody feels really good about tonight's council meeting. I mean, this was very productive. It's a pleasure working with all of you. This was a very good meeting. And with that, I'm gonna adjourn.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.